I would be remiss if I did not mention to the people assembled and to the people watching on TV that this is your last meeting as town moderator and that you have served as town moderator for thirty-three years. There are many components to the lifeblood of a town, but one of them is the willingness of people to volunteer. And John has been at our side at town meeting now for thirty-three years. And to sort of publicly acknowledge that service, we have a plaque here for him, and it reads, "John F. Hogan, in appreciation of your many years of dedicated public service, representing the citizens of the Town of Clinton as Town Moderator, 1986 to 2019." John, it's my pleasure to give you that. And just in closing, I would like to say that he wasn't really a volunteer. He's paid a hundred dollars a year. So in the thirty-three years, he has received the princely sum of thirty-three hundred dollars.
In this, if this is my last, I would like to also just thank a few people for all these years, if I can indulge on you people for that. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, both past and present, for their cooperation assistance over the years that I've worked with them. I'd also like to thank our town attorney, Robert Gibbons, and for his assistance and guidance over the years, as well as his predecessors in the town attorney position, which was Bill Conley Senior and what is now Judge Dennis Sargent. Also like to thank town administrator Michael Ward, who seems to have a world of knowledge every time you ask him a question. Also like to thank Julie Kilbright, who's been with us for most of these thirty-three years, as our clerk stenographer. Also like to thank the Finance Committee, who do a great job of advising the town on how to spend their money, or in some cases, how not to spend their money, as they consider articles. As you know, the moderator appoints the Finance Committee, and I'm proud of the Finance Committee that I've been able to appoint. As well as that, the moderator also appoints the Town Building Committee, and we've got some solid construction-type people that are on that as well. And lastly, I'd like to thank you, the voters and residents of Clinton, for the honor and privilege of allowing me to be your moderator for all these years. I do consider this position one of honor and privilege, and it was my pleasure to be your moderator. I do hope that you receive some knowledge from me, as I certainly learned a lot from you in your comments and your suggestions. I always felt it takes a strong backbone for someone to get up and speak at town meeting, and I congratulate those who have done so over the years. And with that, we can start a little more, with a little more presentation. I'd like to start out with a moment of silence for some people who are former town employees who are no longer with us. Former selectman, firefighter with the Clinton Fire Department, and member of the Retirement Board, John Fum McNamara. Former tax collector employee, Rosemary Hazel. From the Police Department, Jim DeCesare. From the Electoral Inspector's Office, Arthur Mayo and Francis Cipriani. And from the Library, the Director Christine Flaherty. If we could have a moment for these people at this time. Thank you. Your stage members for tonight's meeting are, let's see. From your far right, Selectman Sean Kerrigan. Selectman Bill Conley. Chairman of the Board, Michael Jakonski. Your town administrator is Michael Ward, and your town attorney is Robert Gibbons. And on my left, on my right, your left, is Julie Kilbright, who is our clerk stenographer. The Finance Committee members, who are sitting down here as a group in the front, on your right, are Chairman James Tumalo, Ellen O'Toole, Edward Powers, Attorney Bill McGrail, Bob Latini, and Barry Whitney. All questions and comments should be directed to the moderator. I will redirect that to the appropriate person for a response. Please state your name and address before speaking. Please note personalities in your remarks, and try to keep your comments to the discussion under the article, discussion that we're under. The only votes that will count during hand votes are people who are seated in the call, so those who are standees should find a seat so that their votes can be counted. The only people in the hall now should be registered voters in the Town of Clinton, or people who have been given permission by myself to observe the proceedings from the visitor section of the balcony. All proposed amendments should be presented to me in writing, and unless I hear an objection, I will dispense with a formal reading of the warrant, as you should all have copies in front of you now. Oh, I guess you don't. Could we have our tellers up front, please? Oh, do we have a third? So this here is, that's the school budget, which I own. Hopefully, we won't know. This is the downtown budget. Okay. This here is, it's Mr. Michael. Something that starts with the B. How about your kids? This is how far we go. Well, I'm, I thought you might want. Oh, I don't know. Go ahead, look through it. Is this it? This says motions are now. Okay.
It doesn't matter. I just wanted, we had one, so I wanted to have one.
I think, hopefully, all of you have a warrant in front of you now, so we can get started. Can you hear me all right? Yes or no? Can you hear me okay? Yes? Okay. We'll start with Article Two, as we've already done Article One. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to receive the reports of the town officers.
Article number two have been made and seconded, dealing with receiving annual article to receive the reports of the officers. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card, your blue card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensations of all elective officials of the town as provided by Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws. Set salaries and compensation to be effective from July first, 2019, to June thirtieth, 2020, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money thereof.
Article number three have been made and seconded. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Four. This, I believe this is written in your, okay. It's written in your warrant, but it has to be more specific with the funding sources, which you're going to hear from the stage here now, in terms of where the money is coming. This is for your annual budget for the next fiscal year, beginning July one. On the last page of the budget, under Funding Sources.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from the current tax levy, the sum of forty-four million, sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, and to appropriate and transfer from overlay surplus, the sum of five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And to appropriate and transfer the sum of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, and to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, from the Ambulance Enterprise Fund. And to appropriate and transfer the sum of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and raise and appropriate the sum of two million, seven hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. And to appropriate, and to appropriate from the appropriate and transfer the sum of nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund. And to appropriate from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund, return any earnings, the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars. And to appropriate and transfer the sum of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and four dollars, and raise and appropriate the sum of one million, two hundred and three dollars, two hundred and three thousand and thirty-one dollars, from the Landfill Enterprise Fund. Said sums to be used to defray town charges from July first, 2019, to June thirtieth, 2020, as those charges appear in the Finance Committee Report of Recommendations.
Article number four have been made and seconded. I won't reread it, because it's already been read to you. What I'm going to do is go over the budget department by department, which is here in the back. If you have a question, or a comment, or a suggestion, as I get to each one, raise your hand, and we can address it. If we get past your department that you're thinking about, and you want to go back later, we will have a catch-all at the end of the budget, to go back to anything that was missed. Okay, starting with Section One-Forteen, Moderator. Board of Selectmen. Finance Committee. Town Accountant. Board of Assessors. Treasurer Collector. Parking fines Administrator. Next page. Town Solicitor. Town Clerk. Conservation Commission. Planning Board. Zoning Board. Monmouth Planings Commission. Office of Economic and Community Development. Town Hall Building Manager. Insurance and miscellaneous. Next page. Police Department. Fire Department. Building Inspector. Gas and Plumbing Inspectors. Seal of weights and measures. Electrical Inspector. Office of Emergency Management. Animal Control Officer. School Department. Next page. Department of Public Works. Cemetery Department. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Department of Veteran Services. Bigelow Public Library. Parks and Recreation. Fuller Field Commission. And Penions and Annuities. Next page. Human Resources. Facilities and Ground Department. A lot of miscellaneous items. Budget items that you see there. Next page, four fifty-two, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. The Rubbish Enterprise Fund. The Landfill Enterprise Fund. And a fiscal year budget summary. And then you've got your revenue issues down there. Sources of funding are in there, not to confuse you, but they're there. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion about the proposed budget for the next fiscal year? Article Four. This article is approved by your Finance Committee as written. There being none. Take a vote at this time. All those in favor of Article Four for the budget, please raise your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Five. Mr. Moderator, motion to reconsider the article? Motion has been made and seconded to reconsider Article Four. The intent of this is to kill it for the evening. If you vote yes, you will vote to reconsider the article you just passed, and we'll start all over. If you vote no, Article Four will remain passed, and there will be no further discussion on the duration of this meeting. Anyone not clear about what I mean by that? Okay. All those in favor of reconsideration indicate by raising your card now. Wow. Nobody. All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, Article Four, there will be no further discussion on Article Four for the duration of this meeting. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and town collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement with banking institution for fiscal year 2020 pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three-E half of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Article number five have been made and seconded, requiring annual article requiring the treasurer and collector to put monies they receive in interspearing accounts. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-eight hundred dollars. Said sum to be expended for social services in accordance with programs as approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Article number six have been made and seconded. You're going to sum up forty-eight hundred dollars for social services. Annual article. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor of Article Six indicate by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars. Said sum to be expended, as the Town of Clinton's share to the Wachusett Health Education Action Team, Wheat Incorporated, which committee is a delegate agency of the United Way of Tri County.
Article number seven have been made and seconded, dealing with the sum of twenty thousand dollars for wheat. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? It bears the approval of your Finance Committee. All those in favor, please signify now with your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three-E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, to set the limits on the total amounts that may be expended from each of the town's revolving funds established under the town's administrative bylaws. Revolving Fund, Gas and Plumbing Inspector, fifty thousand. Council on Aging, two thousand. Town Hall Use, five thousand. Old Home Day, twenty-five thousand. Fuller Field, three thousand. And Town Clerk, ten thousand.
Article number eight have been made and seconded, dealing with revolving funds for the departments that are listed in your warrant. This has become an annual article. The Department of Revenue has recommended, we did this a few years ago for every meeting, so it's hearing in before you tonight. This is Finance Committee approved. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Nine.
Article Nine. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the assessor's overlay reserve account the sum of thirty thousand dollars. Said sum to be used to continue the senior tax rebate program for fiscal year 2020.
Article number nine have been made and seconded. Thirty thousand dollars from the assessor's overlay reserve account to be used for the continuation of the senior tax rebate program. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Sir.
Sean Kerrigan, Eighty-Six Orange Street. Over the past, this past year, the Board of Selectmen voted to work with the assessors and take advantage of rebates and exemptions for property taxes wherever possible. This is doubling the number from last year, will allow us to double the amount of, the impact of this program.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussion under Article Nine? There being none. All in favor, please raise your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified precash the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Health Insurance Trust Fund.
Article number ten have been made and seconded, dealing with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the health insurance for retired town employees. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? It also bears the approval of your Finance Committee. There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified precash the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Stabilization Fund.
Article number eleven have been made and seconded, dealing with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be placed into the Stabilization Fund. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion? Requiring a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify now with your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article was passed unanimously. Article Twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund, return retained earnings, the sum of two million, five hundred and sixty thousand, to the Landfill Closure Reserve.
Article number twelve have been made and seconded, dealing with two million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to be transferred. Please look at that word, not appropriated, transferred from the Landfill Enterprise Fund account and going to the Landfill Closure Reserve to work on capping the landfill. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor, please signify now, please. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed unanimously. Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund, retained earnings, the sum of four million, five hundred thousand dollars, to the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund.
Article number thirteen, dealing with the sum of four million, five hundred thousand dollars, also a transfer and not an appropriation. Again, and this would be for the High Street and Church Street project that you probably read about in the paper that's forthcoming. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article?
Mr. Moderator.
Sir.
I would just like to mention that this is just transferring the money into the Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund. There's a later article that authorizes the expenditure.
Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed. Article Fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the following unpaid bills. Reagan Ennis Law Memorial. Reagan Ennis Law memorials, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Daryl Sutterly, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Article number fourteen have been made and seconded dealing with unpaid bills that you see written in your warrant. Finance committee approved, requires a four-fifths vote for approval at an annual town meeting. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed unanimously, Articles fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, said sum to be used for the support of cable access related services, programming, and equipment.
Second.
Article number fifteen have been made and seconded dealing with a sum of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars used for your local cable TV station that you probably see on TV. This article is finance committee approved, is there any questions, comments, or discussion underneath it? There being none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? The article was passed. Article sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town, that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the capital projects and infrastructure improvement stabilization fund the sum of three million dollars and to borrow the sum of one million five hundred thousand dollars, said sums to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the High Street and Church Street reconstruction project, including sidewalks, curbing, and installation of decorative street lights and streetscape improvements in the downtown area, including all related costs.
Second.
Article number sixteen have been made and seconded, uh, this article deals with uh, three million from one source and one point five million from another which will be borrowed, requiring a two-thirds vote for passage, it is for the High Street and Church Street renovation project that we've talked about before. Finance committee approved, questions, comments, or discussion under Article sixteen?
Mr. Moderator.
Sir.
I hope that this, uh, motion passes. The Board of Selectmen have been talking about it for a long time. In simple terms, in the last few years, uh, my wife and I have done a number of renovations and upgrades to the house, something that, uh, most homeowners in the Town of Clinton have done through the course of their ownership. Things have to be updated, things have to be spiffied up. Um, I think it's time for us to spiffy up our downtown business district to be able to put our best foot forward in terms of supporting the businesses that are there and attracting new businesses. One of the questions I'm often asked is, when, when can High Street be, the storefronts on High Street be full and it be as vital downtown as it used to be? I think we're close to being there, I think the downtown is doing well, but we have a, a number of problems. The streetlights are fifty years old. Um, they are particularly on the north end of the town, of High Street, uh, sporadic, there's not a regular pattern to them. They are, in some places, they don't exist on the north end. Uh, the lights are very often off, they're difficult to fix because they're fifty years old. Replacing them will require that the sidewalks be, uh, dug up and therefore they need to be replaced. And in the meantime, uh, there have been many complaints about the, uh, the status of High Street, the street itself. There's holes and ruts and, uh, standing water after a rainstorm. Uh, borings we did as a result of, uh, the committee work that, uh, has been done has shown that this will require a full depth reconstruction, that is, we won't just be sanding the top and putting down, uh, a new street. Uh, the result at the end of this project should be better lighting, uh, lighting more in keeping with the decorative, with the Victorian nature of the town. Lighting, light poles that will enable us to easily put up flags for Memorial and Veterans Day and put up banners for other occasions. It will enable us to reestablish, uh, the beloved Christmas decorating, like, decoration lights, uh, down on High Street. But more importantly, it will provide particularly in the evening a safe and pleasant, uh, pedestrian-friendly downtown for people from town and from out of town. And we're not doing this in, in a vacuum. Uh, we've done traffic, uh, parking studies and have begun implementing the recommendation of the traffic study, uh, with way, uh, finding signs and establishing, uh, parking times, parking limits which the police have begun enforcing. Um, we're also later in the meeting going to be re, re, looking at a zoning article that will make it easier for building owners in the downtown to establish residences in the upper floors up over the storefronts. This is very important to a, to a vital downtown area. Uh, residents in the downtown, uh, bring business there and they have a stake in keeping the place, uh, moving well. So, for the future of the town and for, finally, we'll be able to look and say, well, it's a really bustling, busy downtown, I hope that you will pass this article, thank you very much.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion under Article sixteen? There being none? Oh, I'm sorry, come on up.
Deborah Goodsell, twelve Spring Street, Clinton. I just have a quick question, does this include all the way up to senior housing? As, as in past the senior center, all the way to housing on Church Street?
Uh, the, yeah, the, uh, Church Street up to Corcoran.
Up to Corcoran, okay, 'cause the sidewalks from the senior center up to senior housing are non-existent? Could this be expanded up?
I, I, I'll tell you the truth, Deborah, I don't know how to answer that. I suppose if the funds are available, we, and, and authorized here, we could, we could do that.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion under-
Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to say something else. Uh, this four point five million dollars is not coming out of the tax revenues. This is coming out of the landfill stabilization and capital improvement funds that we've been working to gather these many years. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Phil Duffy, two sixty Church Street, also meeting in economic development director. To Miss Goodsell's question, Deb, just, just so you know, this project doesn't contemplate extending, um, this phase of work up to, uh, presentation. However, this is part of a multi-phase, um, attempts to improve infrastructure in our, the public property in the downtown. We've already, um, been able to affect the, the, uh, redoing of two of the parking lots downtown. We're about to do Walnut Street after having done Nelson Street. Um, we've applied for funding for a little segment of Water Street between Main and High. And a few years ago, we devised a complete streets plan. Uh, we've already been successful in, uh, obtaining funding from that program to do Franklin Street, uh, last year. And I believe that section of sidewalk is either third or fourth on that priority list, so we hope to be getting to that. We have plans to do that, and we hope to be getting to it in the next couple of years. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Still under discussion under Article sixteen, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sir.
My name is Peter Wong. I live at, in Clinton, at one fifty-six Main Street, one of the second oldest houses in Clinton. History, um, growing up in, on High Street, my father, Roy Wing Wong, had three businesses on High Street. I remember we used to wash and press hundreds of shirts, but there was one set that stood out because it was made of fine white linens, hundred percent cotton, in an extra-large size. The shirt had a personalized name tag in, in red letters saying Congressman Philip J. Filbin. My father never charged the congressman extra for having the largest shirt in the business. Nor did we have ever find out why the Honorable Raymond J. Salmon, Salmon, God bless him, former clerk, magistrate of the Clinton District Court would always pick up and drop off the congressman's dirty laundry while doing his own pickups. Back in those days, I remember downtown was, right, leave it up during Christmas. There was more, there were rolls of Christmas lights hung across the street to brighten the holiday shopping. During that period, shopping in downtown ended at Newberry's on the corner of High Street. Today, the place of, places where business have continued to grow north to the end of High Street, also known as the dark side of, the side without lights. Sidewalks and streetlights were not regularly placed then, and there were stretches where there are no lights at all. At the intersection of Water Street, the former Roy Wing Laundry has become Jose's new barber shop. The shop shines like a beacon on a dark night, as you've noticed. But even with its bright lights, it won't prevent an accidental fall or injury due to the sidewalk heaving during the wintertime. It comes up two or three inches, unfortunately during the spring garlet, it settles back down. For the past year, I have had the honor and privilege to sit in on the Town Economic Director's Phil Duffy Steering Committee to revitalize Clinton's downtown. This project will provide for new lights, sidewalks, and pavements to the entire extent and extended business section of High Street. I witnessed the given of personal time, advice, and cooperation from town officials in the role of volunteers. They have the knowledge and experience in their field to come together to collaborate and create plans to improve our, our community to the likes of Hudson or Lemmonstern, et cetera. Case in point is the project to maximize the public park in downtown. The upgraded, this upgrade initiated last summer is, uh, you can see this at the Walnut Street Parkin'. Uh, you've noticed the attractive public, uh, parking signs, the blue with the red circles. I think those are pretty modern and update. So I am in favor of the committee's plan to revitalize Clinton's downtown. I witnessed their unselfish work to utilize public grants and available funds, doing it with their personal knowledge to provide for a better, uh, to provide for a better Clinton for all. This is a matter of public support and your voice is important to the committee members. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion under Article sixteen? Sir. Okay, motion is made to move the question, is there a second to that motion? Okay. You may now be voting on whether to end debate on Article sixteen, not on the article itself. All those in favor of ending debate, requires a two-thirds vote, please raise your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, we have ended debate on Article sixteen and we'll vote on it now. This article, having the approval of your finance committee, having one point five million in borrowing, requires a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor of Article sixteen, please raise your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed unanimously, Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain any and all permanent and or temporary easements for the purpose of repairing, improving, or reconstructing streets, sidewalks, drainage facilities, and, uh, pretenses, I don't know how to say that word, related thereto in connection with the High Street and Church Street reconstruction project and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take all steps necessary, including executing documents and appropriating from available funds money necessary for such acquisitions upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem to be in the best interest in the town, of the town.
Second.
Article number seventeen have been made and seconded dealing with, authorizing the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain any permanent structures or easements they may need to do to conclude the High Street and Church Street project. Is there any, this is finance committee approved, questions, comments, or discussion under Article seventeen? There being none, all in favor, please raise your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed unanimously, Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote, that the town vote to borrow the sum of six hundred and forty thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Clinton Public Schools for the repair or replacement of the roof at the middle school.
Second.
Article number eighteen have been made and seconded dealing with borrowing six hundred and forty thousand dollars to repair and or replace the roof at the Clinton Middle School. Finance committee approved, borrowing article requiring a two-thirds vote for passage. Any questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed unanimously, Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote appropriate and transfers from certified free cash the sum of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a new one-ton truck with catch basin cleaner.
Second.
Article nineteen have been made and seconded dealing with one hundred and forty thousand dollars for a new one-ton truck with a catch basin cleaner for the Department of Public Works. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? Finance committee approved. There being none, we'll take a vote at this time, all in favor, please raise your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed. Yes. Come on up.
I would like to move that we vote on Article forty-six at this time.
Okay, it's a motion to, uh, to vote on Article forty-six at this time, is there a second to that motion? Second. Okay, let me just explain a little bit about that, um, now. As a general rule, I, we don't allow people to move articles. Um, I allowed it one night at a previous meeting when I wasn't around so long, and it got kind of chaotic. However, I'm going to let you decide if you want to move this one. The reason being, this article was on the warrant last year, and there was a quorum check, and this was at the end of the warrant, and it never got heard. So, the decision will be yours whether to allow them to move it, not mine. So I'm just, I don't think we need a lot of discussion on it unless someone has something they want to say about moving it. Um, if not, all, at this point, all in favor of, of voting on Article forty-six at this time, please indicate by raising your card. Thank you, and opposed? Once again, I'm going to ask you to raise your cards real high, and one card per hand, okay? All those in favor of, of, of moving, voting on Article forty-six at this time, please raise your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Can I, might tell where it's up front, I really can't tell. I really can't tell.
Oh, but I'd.
Once again, all those in, in favor of voting on Article forty-six at this time, raise your card, and you can leave your card in the air until you know you have been counted.
That's yes, right?
Thank you. Now, all those opposed to moving Article forty-six, please raise your card now, please. As soon as you know you have been counted, you can drop your hand.
Yeah. Oh, I say what you're saying. Well, I've got that right. I don't have my motions at first. None of it, I don't, where am I? That's my motion, yeah. Well.
Okay, the vote is a hundred and twenty to sixty-seven to move the article, to vote on it now. So we will do that. So now we're voting on Article forty-six. I want to caution anyone else who's thinking about this. I only allow this vote because there was some sort of a legitimate reason based on what happened last year. I'm not going to entertain it because I want to go home, or, you know, or my friends are here, or something like that, so. Okay, Article forty-six.
Article, Article forty-six. Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move Article forty-six to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant the chapter one thirty-eight, section fifteen, all alcohol package store license to ten forty-four Main Street, Clinton LLC, for premises located at ten forty-four Main Street, Clinton, Mass., notwithstanding limitation on the number of such licenses which may be granted or act in any manner related.
Second. Article number forty-six have been made and seconded. What this is, is a convenience store that has a beer and wine license, would like to expand it to a full liquor license on a package store basis. Questions, comments, or discussion under Article forty-six? There being none. All, sir.
I would just ask, in the last year, if this liquor, if this package store has had any violations, before we, we asked them to put a liquor license, a full liquor license, if they've had any violations as a normal liquor, uh, package store?
Is anyone from the police department here who would like to answer that?
Or Brothers Liquors?
Apparently not, so, I, where are we? Oh, there we are. Chief Levinger is here. One of their workers, one of their workers was underage? No? Do we have the right store? I want to make sure we have the right store. This is down, um, across the street from Shaw's? To the right, to the right of Dunkin' Donuts down there? In that pla? Okay, would, Chief, would you come up and, thank you.
Mark Levinger, I'm the chief of police in town, and approximately six weeks ago, ABC was doing a routine check, and there was a violation at, I believe it's Brothers Convenience on Main Street. I think this is the property in question, and one of their cashiers who was underage checked out a person that was of legal age, and that was the violation that we were notified by the ABCC.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments, or discussion under Article forty-six? Well, tabling would be in effect to defeat it. Um, I mean, if you want to make a motion to table, we can do that. It requires a two-thirds vote to table, however. Motion is made to table. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Motion is made to table Article forty-six, requiring a two-thirds vote to table. We're under the motion to table now, so.
John Woodsmall, seventeen James Street. Before we table the question, I guess my, I guess I'm asking people to not table this question, as I have some follow-up questions in terms of if we're going to start. I have some additional follow-up questions regarding why are we going through this process for these particular, for this particular package store? What other violations have other package stores in town been subject to? And why are we singling out this particular one for not making changes? So, obviously, we're not asking that question right now, because the question is to whether to table it or not. So I just ask you to not table the question, so we can discuss this and talk about why we want to not prevent a business in town from expanding its, uh, its business. Thank you.
All those, we'll take a vote on the table right now. All those in favor of tabling Article forty-six, please indicate by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Okay, we're not tabling the article. We're still under Article forty-six. Is there any further discussion under Article forty-six?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Trina Wraith. I just took over management over at Brothers Beer Wine and Postal. We did have an infraction six weeks ago, but it has been written up wrong. The person who sold to the minor was of age, but it did happen. From that point, we have taken on procedures. We are now training our staff for to-be tips trained, and we no longer have that employee working for us. We are making all efforts to make sure that that doesn't happen in future. Since we've opened, we've truly enjoyed being part of the community. And during our time of ownership, our customer base has continued to expand due in large part to our unique selection of craft beers and wine. We've come before the town tonight to ask that we be allowed to petition the state for a full liquor license. This will enable us to expand our business, now to include fine spirits. If we can obtain a full liquor license, this will provide unique offerings to the community. Thank you for allowing us to be heard tonight.
Any further discussion under Article forty-six? If not, we'll take a vote at this time. Again, this is a, a convenience store that would like to go for a full liquor license from a beer and wine they have now, and it's located to the right of Dunkin' Donuts across from Shaw's. All those in favor of Article forty-six, please indicate by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed. Okay, the article is passed. No? Yes. Is a mo, motion to reconsider Article forty-six that you just passed, is there a second to that? Second. Okay, if you vote, it's a motion to reconsider Article forty-six. If you vote yes, you will reopen the article. If you vote no, it will remain passed for the duration of this meeting. All those in favor of reconsidering Article forty-six, please indicate by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. There will be no further consideration of Article forty-six this evening. Article twenty.
Article twenty. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote appropriate and transfer from the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund the sum of one million five hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for road resurfacing and improvements, as approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Second. Article number twenty have been made and seconded, dealing with a sum of one point five million dollars to raise a, a transfer from the, from the stabilization, stabilization fund for capital projects and infrastructure improvements. And this is involved in paving streets. In my discussions with the DPW superintendent, his first priority is Berlin Street. He's talking about Greeley Street and some other side streets that may come up, and that's what this money is for. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article, which is Finance Committee approved? This requires a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you, the article is passed. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash to sum of two hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for drainage system improvements on Pleasant Street, Marshall Street, Liberty Street, Summit Street, and Wilson Street.
Second. Article number twenty-one, dealing with a sum of two hundred thousand dollars to deal with some of the drainage issues on the streets listed on your warrant, Pleasant, Marshall, Liberty Street, Summit Street, and Wilson Street. Finance Committee approved. Coming from the stabilization account requires a two-thirds vote. Am I right? Okay, I guess that's in Twitch now, they're taking it from free cash, so it only requires a majority vote. Any questions, comments, or discussion under Article twenty-one? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you, the article is passed. Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the landfill closure reserve the sum of one million dollars, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the South Meadow Pond dredging and phase one landfill closure project and all related work.
Second. Article number twenty-two, dealing with a sum of one million dollars for the South Meadow Pond dredging, um, from the landfill closure reserve money. This is part of a two point five million dollars from Article twelve that you already passed. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you, the article is passed. Article twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to chapter forty-four, section twenty of the Massachusetts General Laws, the sum of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars from the water meter replacement project authorized under Article thirteen of the twenty thirteen annual town meeting to be used for sewer inflow and infiltration study and related sewer system improvements.
Second. Article number twenty-three, dealing with a sum of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. This money is left over from previously appropriated money to do the meet water meters in your home, and this money was left over. And this article and Article twenty-four are related. The DPW is suggesting that the, this remaining money be put into a sewer inflow and infiltration study and related sewer system improvements. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, being a transfer, question, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you, the article is passed unanimously. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for a sewer inflow and infiltration study and related sewer system improvement.
Second. Article number twenty-four, dealing with two, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in addition to the article you just passed of two twenty-nine, also for the sewer inflow and infiltration study and related sewer system improvements. Finance Committee approved. Is a borrowing article, requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Questions, comments, or discussion under Article twenty-four? There being none. All in favor, please raise your card now. Thank you, and those opposed? Thank you, the article is passed. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for exterior painting and installation of a disinfection byproduct removal system at the Burditt Hill Tank, and for interior, exterior painting and installation of mixing valve system at the Mulberry Water Tank.
Second. Article number twenty-five have been made and seconded, dealing with nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for work being done on the Burditt Hill Water Tank and the Mulberry, Mulberry Water Tank on the acre. Finance Committee approved. Borrowing article requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor, please indicate by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, it's passed unanimously. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of fifty thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for studies permitting in connection with dam removal assessments at the Wiki-Piki property in Sterling.
Second. Article number twenty-six, dealing with borrowing fifty thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works for studies permitting in connection with dam removal access for the Wiki-Piki property in Sterling that we own. Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, or discussion? A borrowing article requires a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from said certified free cash to sum of two hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the police chief for the purchase of and installation of a cloud-based record management software system for police and fire reports.
Second. Article number twenty-seven, dealing with a sum of two hundred thousand dollars to be expended by the police chief for the purchase of installation of a cloud-based records management software system for the police department. This article is also Finance Committee approved. Questions, comments, and discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? The article is passed. Article twenty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash to sum of one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and to borrow the sum of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, said sums to be used by the fire department for the purchase of a new fire engine.
Second. Article number twenty-eight have been made and seconded, dealing with a sum of one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in free cash, and three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars as a borrowing, which requires a two-thirds vote for passage for a new fire engine for the Clinton Fire Department. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There's the approval of your Finance Committee? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed unanimously. Article twenty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the filing of special legislation to allow for the Board of Selectmen to appoint two alternate members of the Conservation Commission for staggered terms not to exceed three years whereby the Chair of the Commission may designate an alternate, an alternate member to sit on the commission in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of a member of the commission, or in the event of a vacancy on the commission. Commission, or in the event of a vacancy on the con- Commission until the vacancy is filled under Section eight C of Chapter forty.
Second. Article twenty-nine have been made and seconded, dealing with the Conservation Commission, they're seeking two alternate members due to the possibility, and what can happen is, uh, conflicts of interest, vacation schedules, or someone resigning, and they need to fill it. Questions, comments, or discussion under Article twenty-nine? There being none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed, thank you, the article is passed unanimously. Article twenty, Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions under Chapter thirty-two, Section twenty-eight, to indemnify members of the Clinton Retirement Board to the same extent as provided for public employees under Chapter two fifty-eight, in connection with the defense of any civil action defended by an attorney employed by said board and arising out of acts performed by such members while acting within the scope of his or her official duties.
Second. Article number thirty have been made and seconded, dealing with the Clinton Retirement Board, the members are looking for the same protections that other elected officials have in terms of any lawsuit that may do, be brought up because of actions they take. Questions, comments, or discussion under Article thirty? There being none, all in favor, please raise your card now. Thank you, and opposed, thank you, the article is passed unanimously. Article thirty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the administrative bylaws by adding a new article caption, "Transfers from the Landfill Enterprise Fund to the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund," as set forth for the purpose of establishing guidelines for the transfer of funds from the Landfill Enterprise Fund to the Capital Projects Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund. Mr. Moderator, I further, further move to dispense with the reading of the remainder of the article.
Second. Okay, Article number thirty-one have been made and seconded, uh, they're looking to it, uh, amend the administrative bylaws, the legislature has already approved this, but we have not created a bylaw for this yet in town, and that's what this is for, to create a bylaw to go along with the letter, uh, legislature-approved act. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, and opposed, thank you, the article is passed. Article thirty-two.
Mr. Mo- Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the administrative bylaws of the Town of Clinton by deleting Article fourteen, "Free Public Library Trustees," and inserting a new Article fourteen, "Bigelow Free Public Library." Mr. Moderator, I further move to dispense with the re- reading of the remainder of this article.
Second. Article number thirty-two have been made and seconded. What happens is town government here is operated and controlled by the Clinton Town bylaws of nineteen fourteen, and that's when the article for the library was written. Um, it has been amended over the years in certain areas, but apparently not under the library, they would like to bring this up to the twenty, twentieth century, so they are requesting that this article be approved, would replace the existing bylaw for the town, and create a more modern bylaw under which the library would be governed. Ma'am.
Gloria Parkinson, ninety Haskell Avenue, a member of the Board of Library Trustees. Just a little background about the existing article as the moderator Hogan referred, what, back, forward?
Begin to the microphone.
Oh, more, okay, how's that?
Okay.
Oh, we have to look at myself, okay. Um, so, just a bit of background about the existing article, the library was built in nineteen hundred and two. The trustees believe that those existing articles go back to nineteen fourteen and maybe earlier, so what we are bringing before you are updated bylaws, and while a considerable amount of content remains essentially the same, changes in the proposed updated bylaws before you tonight reflect the changes coming from various sources, so here we go. One, Massachusetts general laws that pertain to libraries. Two, Massachusetts employment laws, these are the laws the Town of Clinton adheres to vis-à-vis town employees such as library staff. Three, Town of Clinton employment policies and procedures as administered by the town's personnel board. And four, guidelines of the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners as found in the MBLC's Library Trustees Handbook. And just for those who are not familiar, the MBLC is the state agency that accredits state libraries and supports accredited libraries with state aid, such as the Bigelow Free Public Library. It is also the state agency that awards library planning and design and construction grants to successfully munis- to successful municipal applicants. So on behalf of the Board of Library Trustees, I respectfully ask you to vote in support of the proposed updated library board that encompass now the laws of the state and the procedures and policies of our town. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion under the article? Article thirty-two, if there being none, all in favor, please indicate by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed, thank you, the article is passed unanimously. Article thirty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to admini- amend the administrative bylaws of the Town of Clinton by deleting Article three, duties of the selec- selectmen, Section seven eleven, and inserting new Section eleven to establish new guidelines relative to the disposition of surplus town property. Mr. Moderator, I further move to dispense with the reading of the remainder of the article.
Second. Article number thirty-three have been made and seconded, dealing with, uh, depending upon the value of the property, how the town would dispense with property that is obsolete, antiquated, or no longer needed by the town, and there's one guideline for under five hundred dollars, another guideline for between five hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars, and another guideline for twenty-five hundred dollars or more. I won't read all that, I will suffice to say that the Chief Procurement Officer is rather mentioned CPO in the article, that refers to the administrative assistant who is presently Michael Ward, who would deal with a lot of this. Questions, comments, and discussion under Article thirty-three, sir?
Jeff Swan, one thirty-two Franklin Street. I'd like to propose an amendment, um, this article, I have no problems with the article itself, this article relies heavily on Massachusetts Law Thirty-B, which is a general law, and states on how the items procurement is done and how things are disposed of. Though that art- particular law leaves a broad area to the town as to how it builds its procedures to do so. In reading the particular-
So what, what is your amendment, sir?
The amendment is that in all cases outlined in Article thirty-three, the CPO should be required to maintain a publicly available and accessible list of all items deemed surplus that are disposed of via Article thirty-three, Section eleven. This list should consist of date of disposal, item description, price of item, or bartered value, acquiring person or entity, simply to make sure that there is no sense of-
Hold up, hold up, you've got an amendment, is there a second to that proposed amendment? Okay, there is, under discussion, go ahead.
Oh, so my only reason for that is, is, under the way the article is currently written, there is no actual central list, so if someone said, and there are several spots within the, uh, article as it's written where there is discretion allowed, where in fact people can say, "It's my personal decision, this is worth X or Y." So, to prevent people from later saying, "Oh, I think that there was a sweetheart deal involved if we maintained a list that stated what was bartered or sold, and what it was sold for, at which time, and who it was sold to," this would allow a transparency level that would prevent that kind of accusation in the future.
Okay, you have that, yeah. Okay, the proposed amendment is, the CPO would be required to maintain a publicly available and accessible list of items deemed surplus that are disposed of via Article thirty-three, Section two. This list should con- consist of the date of disposal, the item description, the pr- price of the item, and ac- the acquiring person or of the, of the, or entity that required the, uh, acquired the article. Any questions right now, we're on the proposed amendment, any questions, comments, or discussion on the amendment to the article? Ma'am? Come on up, come on up.
Uh, Rebecca Gray, fifteen Ross Street, here in Clinton, um, you said Section two of Article thirty-three, um, I believe we're discussing Section eleven of Article thirty-three?
Oh.
So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you, that, it's, it's written one-one, I presume that to be two, it's really eleven, good point, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on the amendment to Article thirty-three? There being none, all those in favor of the proposed amendment, please indicate by raising your card now. Thank you, and opposed? The, okay, the, the article is amended as we've just stated. We're now under the article as amended, questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none, take a vote at this time, all those in favor of Article thirty-three as amended, please raise your card, thank you, and opposed, the article is passed unanimously. Article thirty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the administrative bylaws by adding a new article to adopt the Stretch Energy Code as set forth below for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy pursuant to Appendix one fifteen point AA of the Massachusetts Building Code, seven eighty Code of Massachusetts Regulation, the Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with an effective date of January first, twenty twenty.
Second. Article number thirty-four have been made and seconded, my understanding this deals with new construction projects, is what I'm told, um, and I don't have more for you than that. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Mr. Duffy, could you just, is this just new, if this is new additions, would that come under this, or no? You know?
Phil Duffy, two sixty Church Street, Community and Economic Development Director. This October, the town intends to seek designation from the state as a green community. This designation will allow the town to, uh, apply for assist, I'm sorry, can you, oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Okay, how's that? Okay. This October, the, the town intends to, uh, seek designation as a green community from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This designation will allow the community to apply for, uh, grants and other technical assistance as it strives to implement energy efficiency measures, cost-saving measures. One requirement, uh, of a, for a community that seeks this designation is that a town adopt the Stretch Code. The Stretch Code is a, uh, is a kind of a deluxe version of, of the building code elements that deal with energy efficiency. Currently, uh, two hundred and sixty-six of the Commonwealth's three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns have already adopted the Stretch Code, including all of our neighbors save Sterling and, uh, Boylston. So this is not uncharted territory, well, more than three-quarters of the people in Massachusetts live under the Stretch Code currently. The Stretch Code would, uh, require that, um, builders of new construction, um, that they basically comply with requirements which mostly have to do with testing and the manner in which you demonstrate compliance with, with the bylaw, with the code. Additions, renovations are exempt, most commercial structures under a hundred thousand square feet are also exempt. So in short, if you're a builder, and you're working in other communities, you're probably used to this, if you are a prospective homeowner, um, this is, the state estimates that this would cost, uh, would add additional seven hundred to thirteen hundred dollars to the cost of an average dwelling, uh, but that cost is usually recaptured in savings within a few years. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion under Article thirty-four? There being none, take a vote at this time, all in favor of Article thirty, thirty-four, indicate by raising your card. Thank you, and opposed? Thank you, the article is passed. Article thirty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Clinton by inserting a new section, thirty-five hundred, mixed-use downtown residential. Thirty-five hundred, mixed-use downtown residential. Thirty-five ten, purpose, this zoning bylaw shall encourage the creation of conserv- conversion of existing structures and creation of a new mixed-use commercial and residential structures in Clinton's downtown and along commercial nodes to support Clinton's local economy and meet lo- local housing needs. Mr. Moderator, I further move to dispense with the reading of the remainder of this article.
Second. Article number thirty-five have been made and seconded, a zoning article change, um, it's, it's long, if you look on the next page, it talks about the minimum square footage for any new apartments that would be built, um, the first floor of mixed-use structures must be primarily dedicated to a commercial use, with no more than twenty percent of the first floor area served, serving upper-story residential uses, such as for the customary provision of an entrance, lobby, elevator, and the like. Questions, comments, or discussion under this proposed, uh, zoning change? Sir?
Again, Phil Duffy, two sixty Church Street, on Monday, May twenty-eighth, the Planning Board had a public hearing in connection with the zoning article, and voted three-nothing to recommend it to the floor of town meeting. Um, this is the first of four zoning articles that are before you this evening, the first three deal with, uh, zoning provisions that, as they relate to the creation of multifamily dwellings. The fourth article will be kind of a housekeeping article that addresses a couple minor inconsistencies in our existing bylaw that was last substantially revisited in two thousand and one. Speaking to Article thirty-five, Article thirty-five, um, uh, its primary intent is to incentivize investment in downtown buildings, and it, it proposes to do so by allowing for the as-of-right creation of residential dwelling units on the upper floors of buildings in the downtown. Again, this is not a game changer, there are probably two hundred and eighty units of, of housing in downtown already on upper floors, uh, but there are still a handful of buildings that for decades, um, have existed as either substantially underutilized or not utilized at all. This will allow potential investors, provide some potential investors a degree of certainty as they contemplate making investments in their property, allows them the opportunity to realize a return. The bylaw stipulates minimum unit sizes, depending on the number of bedrooms, it stipulates, uh, parking requirements, and it also provides some guidance as to, as, as Mr. Hogan mentioned, you know, s- some limitations on the amount of ground floor area that can be used for the residential units, and other things pertaining to design. Um, I'll stop at that, I'm happy to answer any questions, with the interest of time, I'll leave my presentation at that, thank you.
Is there any further questions, comments, or discussion under thirty-five, sir?
Jeff Swan, one thirty-two Franklin Street. Is there a clear definition of the word downtown? Are there boundaries? I mean, the word downtown is throughout the article, I see no definition that says downtown is this street to this street, it's just downtown, which is like saying it's an area, it doesn't define what we're actually voting on.
Well, I think you're right, it's, it's an area, so.
So I ask again, is there a clear definition of the word downtown?
The purposes of this bylaw, the downtown that we are referring is the BR District, um, or the BR Zoning District, which, if you have that handout, it indicated on the map, and that substantially, that area substantially encompasses what we conceive, not consider to be the downtown. The bylaw would allow for the as-of-right conversion of, uh, conversion to dwelling units in the BR District, and would also allow for the special permit conversion of uses in the C District, the commercial district, and the R-one district. And the reason for that is because the, 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 the district boundaries are not quite neat. For instance, you all know the old Georgerson's grocery store on, on north Main Street, north of the railroad bridge, it just so happens that that building, I don't believe, is in the, uh, BR District, but is of a type with everything else. Sorry. So the, in short, the definition of downtown as pertains to this, this article is the BR District, which is a delineated zone shown on the maps in your handout, which substantially describes what we consider to be the downtown.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Ma'am.
Rebecca Gray, 15 Ross Street here in Clinton. I have three questions in no particular order. Is there going to be a push for these housing units to be accessible, including elevators as necessary? Will there be a push for affordable housing in these downtown units? And finally, are these new housing units going to be required to have sprinklers? That's it.
Anybody want to tackle that? Mr. Duffy?
The bylaw is silent as to whether these are created as affordable units. The other two questions having to do with whether they are sprinkler accessible. Those requirements are part and parcel of other codes that pertain to new construction, fire code, and accessibility code, such as 521 CMR. So normally zoning doesn't refer to those specifically. Zoning may refer to whether units are designated as affordable, but that is not what is contemplated in this bylaw. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion under the proposed article? There being none, we'll take a vote at this time. Is the zoning change requiring? Sir? Okay. Vote, zoning change requiring a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor of Article 35 as written, please raise your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Okay, the article is passed. Article 36.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Clinton by inserting a new section 7300, conversion of existing structures. Section 7300, conversion of existing structures. 7310, purpose. The purpose of this zoning bylaw is to support the preservation and protection of the architectural integrity of historic residential structures in Clinton by allowing for interior conversions of floor area to two-family or multifamily housing, thereby increasing the financial viability of such structures. Mr. Moderator, I further move to dispense with the reading of the remainder of this article.
Second. Article number 36 have been made and seconded, dealing with zoning change for conversions of existing structures. I also, I'm not going to read this, so rather long. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? Mr. Duffy?
Phil Duffy, 260 Church Street. On Monday, May 28th, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article and voted 3-0 to recommend it to the floor of town meeting. This article proposes to actually restore an amendment to our zoning bylaw that existed prior to 2001, and that was a bylaw that provided for the conversion of existing dwellings to multifamily dwellings. It is intended primarily for the R1 District and stipulates minimum size of a building eligible for consideration for a special permit. Also stipulates other requirements having to do with unit size, parking requirements, et cetera. This comes in part out of analysis done by a consultant who was hired by the Planning Board with money given to it by last year's town meeting. And one revealing component of that consultant's analysis was that 59% of the Town of Clinton could not be created under our current zoning bylaw. In short, we created a bylaw that didn't allow us to make any more of the Clinton that most of us liked. If you live in the R1 District, which is the residential neighborhoods closer to downtown, it's very likely that you already have a two-family or a multifamily house on your street. This would again allow for the creation of new housing inventory, which appears to be in alignment with emerging housing needs. We are becoming a grayer society. We're becoming a society where new residents are more versed to purchasing properties as well as to create units for people in different stages of life, and it would allow for reinvestment in existing structures that comply with the zoning bylaw. In the interest of time, I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion under Article 36? Zoning bylaw change as well requiring a two-thirds vote for passage. Sir?
Jeff Swan, 132 Franklin Street. This bylaw is not specific to downtown, correct? This is town-wide.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, requires a two-thirds vote. We'll take a vote at this time. All those in favor of Article 36 as written, please raise your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed. Article 37.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Clinton by inserting regulations and standards related to multifamily housing, including amendments to section 4130, Table of Dimensional Requirements, section 5100, Table of Parking Requirements, and inclusion of a new section 9457, Site Plan Design Standards for Multifamily Housing. Mr. Moderator, I further move that we dispense with the reading of the remainder of this article.
Second. Article 37 have been made and seconded. Yet another zoning bylaw change dealing with parking on the next page for new parking, parking spaces required for new dwelling units. Dimension requirements on the first page as you start. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? Mr. Duffy?
Again, Phil Duffy, 260 Church Street. On Monday, May 28th, the Planning Board held a public hearing to review the proposed amendment to zoning bylaw and voted 3-0 to recommend it to the floor of town meeting. This article again addresses multifamily dwellings in zoning. It addresses the performance standards of zoning. It's composed of three parts. The amendment to section 4130 only clarifies the existing bylaw. It has to do with the dimensional requirements for lots considered for multifamily. It doesn't change the dimensional requirements except in the C District because that previously said NA, and it was always questioned whether that NA meant not allowed or not applicable. The new section 4130 is more explicit. In fact, it's not allowed in the industrial district and specifies the commercial district's area requirement. Section 5100, performance, again, performance criteria established with the number of parking spaces required for multifamily dwellings. And the new section 9457 is a set of design standards that pertain specifically to multifamily housing, and it effectively strongly, strongly advises applicants to consider their context, build buildings that look residential, you know, suggest good design, and most importantly gives developers, applicants, an idea of what the board will be looking for when they come before the board. Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any further questions, comments, or discussion under Article 37? There being none, also requiring a two-thirds vote for passage. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed. Article 38.
Article 38. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will, the town to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Clinton to insert the following amendments. Allow for multiple principal structures on the same lot by special permit. Alter lot area computation. Alter parking area design requirements. Allow a waiver of the land use ratio for mill conversion slash planned developments by special permit and clarify special permit requirements for site plan review and plan requirements. Mr. Moderator, I further move that we dispense with the reading of the remainder of this article.
Second. Article 38 have been made and seconded. A zoning article change as per written in your warrant. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? Mr. Duffy?
Hello again. I'm told to speak up, so hopefully you can hear me. Phil Duffy, 260 Church Street. On May 28th, the Planning Board held a public hearing to review the proposed article and voted 3-0 to recommend it to the floor of town meeting. This article is in large a housekeeping article. It changes, it proposes to change the wording on a few items which are listed in the header for the article, having to do with one structure per lot. Lot area computation for multifamily dwellings, units, some parking changes. Let's see, language and flexible development to bring in consistency. The language on the planning development to allow developers, applicants to make, figure out their own mix of uses rather than having to be stipulated by the town. And then in section two, basically in the order of indexing, to refer to section 9400, the special permit, such as the site plan of view provisions in section 9300, just to make it clear to people. I do have an amendment to make to the article. I'd like to bring, give to the. The amendment is to include the following language. It's amendment to section 5100, the Table of Parking Requirements. It is to say, Table of Parking Requirements for Principal Use A.5, Planned Unit Development slash Mill Conversion. Number of parking spaces will now, will be changed from, changed from reading C. section 8200 to C. section 7300.
Is there a, before we go too far, is there a second to this motion, this amendment change? Okay. Now, Mr. Duffy, go ahead.
And again, that's just in the order of bookkeeping. Our existing bylaw misidentifies the reference section. So again, this is really just some bookkeeping. Happy to answer any questions that people may have. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion under the amendment to Article 38? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The amendment is passed. So now we're looking at Article 38 as amended. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none, take a vote at this time. Two-thirds vote required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed. Article 39.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to declare the real properties owned by the town and located at 329 High Street and 172 Sterling Street as surplus properties and available for disposition, thereby enabling the Board of Selectmen to solicit proposals from potential purchasers of the properties in accordance with Chapter 30B of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second. Article number 39 dealing with, the two properties involved, 329 High Street is the garage on the corner of High and Water that the town now owns that's vacant, and the other was 172 Sterling Street, the former Rock Bestow site, which is also vacant. Instead of just auctioning it off, which is what the town usually does and taking the highest bidder, they're suggesting we go to, you give the selectmen authority to deal with it and get, and get a proposal better than you might get by just auctioning it off. I can tell you when the Rock Bestow site was auctioned off a few years ago, not three, four years ago, it went for 30-something thousand dollars. But that person ended up, because of environmental concerns, ended up turning the property over to the town. Questions, comments, or discussion under Article 39? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article 40.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the private way known as Prescott Lane as a public way in the Town of Clinton, as shown on a plan on file in the office of the town clerk and available for public inspection during regular town hall business hours.
Second. Article number 40 have been made and seconded, dealing with accepting Prescott Lane as a public way of the Town of Clinton. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed. Article 41.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the open space areas consisting of 5.45 acres and 3.08 acres as shown on a plan of land entitled The Villages at Buffton Farm, definitive subdivision of land in Clinton, Mass., prepared for 2100 Corp., scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, August 2003. Which plan is recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 845, Plan 4, and a plan, and plan of land entitled The Villages at Buffton Farm, modification of definitive subdivision of land, Clinton, Mass., owned by 2100 Corporation, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, March 2013, prepared by David E. Ross Associates, Incorporated, Civil Engineers, Land Surveyors, Environmental Consultants. Which plan is recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 902, Plan 88?
Second. Article 41 have been made and seconded, dealing with, the town is asking you to accept the open space the developer promised when they built out Buffton Farms. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed. Article 42.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Lot 7 and Lot 12 and those areas marked as open space on a plan of land entitled Definitive Subdivision, Modification, Nathan Heights, Phase 1, Clinton, Massachusetts, a flexible development plan, prepared for owner G&amp;B Investments, LLC, 2100, Lakeview Avenue, Drakeett, Massachusetts, O.1826, scale 1 inch equals 200 feet, June 11th, 2004, prepared by Kuku &amp; Cormier Engineering Associates, Incorporated, Civil Engineers, Land Surveyor, Environmental Sciences, 170 Main Street, Unit 112, Tewksbury, Mass., O.1876, which plan is recorded with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds at Plan Book 820, Plan 6.
Second. Article number 42 have been made and seconded, dealing with another acceptance of open space, this time the Nathan Heights area. Same situation where the developer promised it to the town. We are now asking you to accept it. Questions, comments, or discussion under Article 42? Sir? Or ma'am, or whatever. I can't see. I'm sorry. Now you know why I'm retiring.
Franny Hodge, 16 Harbor Street. I just wanted a clarification on what you mean by open space. Does that mean that the town will keep it as protected open space and there will be a conservation restriction on those lots?
Is there anyone?
The town's accepting open space, but you're, you know, what do you mean by that?
I would say there's probably no plans to do anything with it right now. Mr. Duffy, do you know anything about it? Is there any plans to deal with the, do anything with the open space in the Buffton Farms area that this article addresses?
Phil Duffy, 260 Church Street. We have to go way into the wayback machine because this project was approved, I believe, in 1999 or 2000. At the time, these projects were approved and subsequently amended. Developer agreed to convey a lot, I believe at the corner of Hillside and JFK, to the town with the idea that it could be developed as a kind of pocket park or neighborhood park. That subsequently, the project was amended and it took advantage of our flexible development by law to create some open space that went from the back of the property down to the Nashua River and also reoriented the new street, whose name I can't remember, the extension over the old St. Jude Ave, so that it angled away from the houses on JFK and gave people more of a buffer. You weren't looking out your back window into somebody else's back window. Whatever definition applies will be in that decision. I can't quote it, but I think if it was under flexible development, it would have been dedicated explicitly as open space. And if it's a part of the original one, the idea was that that lot at the corner of Hillside and JFK could be developed as a neighborhood park. And that's not the lot that's up? Okay. Okay. Then I, okay. Okay, thanks. Didn't know that. That's what I know.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion under Article 42? There being none, we'll take a vote at this time. All in favor of Article 42, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article's passed unanimously. Article 43.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to acquire by gift a parcel of land on Pond Do Drive for the maintenance of the water line, said parcel being known as Parcel A, consisting of 11,755 square feet as shown on a plan of land entitled Land in Clinton, Massachusetts, Boston and. Massachusetts, Boston and Main Corporation to South Meadow Way Realty Trust, dated May 1st, 2014, drawn by New England Engineering Group." Said plan being recorded with the Registry of, Worcester Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 907, Plan 36, being the same parcel conveyed to South Meadow Way Realty Trust by deed recorded in Book 56137, Page 302.
Second. Article number 43 have been made in seconded. What this is, is a parcel of land on Pond View Drive. Apparently, our water lines run under this land, and it's not the town's. And part of the road is on top of the land, and that's not the town's either. So what the gentleman who owns it is suggesting, rather than getting into right of ways and so forth, is that he just donate the town to us so that we don't have to deal with that and accept that piece of land so that we would now own the land that the street is on and also the water line underneath it. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? There being none. All in favor of Article 43, please indicate by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed. Article 44.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to grant a utility easement over town-owned land on South Meadow Road in connection with potential private property solar arrays, hereby enabling the Board of Selectmen to solicit proposals for use of such utility easements and benefits to the town herefrom in accordance with Chapter 30B of the Massachusetts General Laws as applicable.
Second. Article 44 made in seconded, dealing with granting a utility easement over town-owned land to some other land with the potential to create solar arrays for the town. So you would need to grant the easement if you wanted that to happen. Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? Requires a two-thirds vote for passage. All in favor of this article, please indicate by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed. Article 45.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for Special Legislation, legislation to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant a Chapter 138, Section 15, all alcohol package store license to Super Summit Inc. for premises located at 1183 Main Street, Clinton, Mass., notwithstanding the limitation on the number of such licenses which may be granted or act in any way thereon.
Second. Article 45 have been made in second. It's similar to Article 46 that you already passed, a different location. This one, well, location-wise, if you're in the street looking at Chars, to the left, there's an abandoned gas station, and just beyond that, there's a small plaza with a convenience store there that has a beer and wine license, and they are seeking to increase it to a full package license. Questions on by citizens petition? Questions, comments, or discussion under the article? If you approve it, it would go to the legislature for their approval, and then they would have it if you choose to do it. If there is no discussion, we'll take a vote at this time. All in favor of Article 45 as written, please indicate by your card. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed. Article 47.
Mr. Moderator, I move to table Article 47.
Article number 47, a motion has been made to table that. It is asking the town to appropriate money, not to receive $10,000, to purchase a storage unit for Fuller Field at the upcoming town meeting. It was a citizens petition written out. The Finance Committee has disapproved it, and there is now a motion to table it. All those table requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of tabling Article 47, indicate by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Once more. All in favor of tabling, raise your card. And opposed? Okay. The tabling is defeated. Require a two-thirds vote. That's why it's defeated. So we'll now vote on Article 47 or any discussion, let's say, first. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I hope that this article will not pass. I think it's a bad precedent. I wish the Clinton youth football and cheerleaders well, but I think it is a bad precedent for the town to be purchasing storage facilities for private entities. That's my opinion.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion under Article 47? Sir?
Tim Tumalo, Preshore Lane, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Anything that happens in Fuller Field should have been proposed by Fuller Field, and we should have had the information from Fuller Field. Talked to a few people on the Fuller Field Commission. They really don't have the information, and I don't think we want to put a container down there. I mean, we've put a lot of money in that field. Looks beautiful. If they proposed it, we should consider it. If it wasn't proposed by them, I don't believe that we should vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Still under discussion. Sir?
Greg Nelson, 36 John F. Kennedy Ave. I'd like to make an amendment to this article. I'd like to see if we could get permission for the youth football to be able to use some of the vacant locker rooms for storage down there. It won't cost the town anything, and I think it'd be a nice amendment.
Well, all right. That's, that's all. I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to rule that out of order. It's totally unrelated to the article, and we have to address the article. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I think you've got to bring it to the Fuller Field Commission, and they would have authority over that. Okay? It's just not, it doesn't relate to the article. The article is asking for money for something else. So we have to stay with that. Any questions, comments, or discussion under the article? Yes?
John Woodsmalle, 17 James Street. I'm not speaking to the validity of the request, but more just a procedural question, that if this is voted and approved, there's nothing that states where the money is being appropriated from. And I would suggest that if any of the petitioners wanted to actually see this happen, just approving this vote as is doesn't mean anything because there's no money associated with it. And the source of the money needs to be identified, which would have to be amended unless it's coming out of free cash somehow. I'm sorry. So I would suggest that, of course, this raises issues with the budget being closed already, but if you want this to happen, you need to identify where the money is coming from. And just simply asking for it to be appropriated doesn't work, and somebody would need to amend that motion.
Okay. Just as a point, there is no method of appropriation in this. He's right. Doesn't mean it can't be amended, but right now, that's how it's, that's how it's written. The town is required to print this as written from a citizens petition, which is what this is. That's why it's on your warrant in this fashion. Mr. Connolly?
Mr. Moderator, where this is a Finance Committee Disapproved Article, does that mean it's a ballot vote?
It's ballot votes are over 25,000. This is only 10. The next one would be a ballot vote, the last article. We will vote on this. I'm not sure, given that there's no appropriation, where it will go, but I think we will vote on it and see where it goes. Unless there's any further discussion. Article 47 dealing with $10,000 for a storage unit for Fuller Field proposed by the Clinton Youth Football and Cheerleading. Finance Committee Disapproved. All those in favor, it's a hand-majority vote. All those in favor of Article 47, please indicate by raising your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article 47 is defeated.
Mr. Moderator?
Article 48.
I'm sorry. I move to table Article 48. Twenty-eight thousand dollars has already been put in the facility department budget, so it's not necessary.
Okay. Motion to table Article 48. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Apparently, the money has been already put in the budget, Mr. Connolly, for this article, so it's kind of a moot article. The money's already there. All those in favor of tabling Article 48, please indicate by raising your card. Thank you. And opposed? Article 48 is tabled. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. It's been a pleasure. Have a good night.
Well, that was, I would say...
I don't think so. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
We're done.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
We didn't do it, but we didn't do it. But I think we have.
Well, do we need a motion or can we?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
I really do. I just got to find it. In here somewhere.
Thank you.
It has. I enjoyed it. My back's kicking in. Thank you for everything, Mike. Thank you.
All in favor of adjourn? Meeting is adjourned.
We're adjourned. Oh, yeah. Maybe call him. See what the hell he did. See what he did.